Hello everyone and welcome back to another episode of Crisis Watch Kingston. I'm your host Sebastian Valencourt and today on the show, we're going to be switching up the format just a little bit. This month, instead of having one or two guests come on the show to share their experiences with us, we'll be hearing from Mayor Brian Patterson and all of our city councillors in the form of an audio montage of clips edited together from various city council meetings. Now this montage is something I've helped produce in collaboration with the Integrated Care Hub and the Katarakuway Union of Tenants, with the hopes of detailing the exact conversations and policy decisions which now threaten the Integrated Care Hub's very existence. But I'll talk some more about this montage a little later. First, for those of you listening who may not have listened to the show before, and as a little refresher for those of you who have, we should establish what exactly the Integrated Care Hub is, why it's so important to our community, and the reasons it was created. The ICH or hub does many different things, serving both as a shelter, somewhere where those without homes can safely spend the night, and also as a mental health clinic and safe injection site. Since moving to its current location at 661 Montreal Street in November of 2020, the hub has garnered a lot of both positive and negative media attention. And while its role as a homeless shelter is often widely discussed, the majority of the praise and hate that facility receives tends to revolve around its focus on those struggling with addiction. And for those who have lived in Kingston for a while, this really shouldn't come as a surprise, as the debate around having a safe injection site in our community dates back to at the very least 2011, now over 10 years ago. In a Kingstonist article titled "Does Kingston Need A Safe Injection Site?", from October of 2011, Harvey Kirkpatrick writes, "Last week, the Supreme Court of Canada unanimously decided to uphold British Columbia's right to operate the safe drug injection site in Vancouver's downtown east side. The highly controversial Insight facility was established in 2003 to curb overdoses and disease spreading that is synonymous with illicit needle drugs. What is more contentious, while cocaine and heroin are considered illegal everywhere in Canada, addicts can step inside and use at the Insight facility without risking drug possession charges. Consider the fact that Kingston is already home to the Street Health Centre, SHC, which facilitates disease prevention and treatment for individuals who are involved in illicit drugs, the sex trade, high-risk use, the homeless, as well as people recently released from incarceration. More importantly, SHC began as a needle exchange program in 1992 and in recent years, it has expanded to offer methadone treatment for people recovering from opioid dependency. Similar to Vancouver's Insight facility, Kingston's SHC offers clients health, treatment, and counselling information, as well as referrals to various external agencies with expanded capabilities. Is it time to consider expanding the SHC's mandates or establish a new facility altogether to serve as a local safe drug injection site? Interestingly, to answer this question, the article includes a poll with responses from around 120 Kingstonist readers, where 57% of individuals supported the opening of some kind of safe injection site in Kingston. While obviously this is just one small poll conducted by a local newspaper, it does show while there has always been support for this facility like the hub in Kingston, that support is far from unanimous. The other 43% of respondents to the poll were split roughly 60/40 between absolutely not and not sure. And it's the not sure's that I want to come back to in just a little while here. In Canada and in most western countries, there is a lot of stigma around drugs and drug users, and there has been for a very long time. Ever since US President Richard Nixon declared the start of what we would come to know as the War on Drugs in June of 1971, the mere possession of drugs has been used as an excuse to oppress, arrest, and quite frankly, execute racial minorities and the poor all around the world. And while in today's episode, we'll mostly be talking about how war on drugs era politics have impacted Canadians domestically, we will certainly be coming back in the future to talk about the massive role the drug trade plays in Canada and its allies' foreign policy. In Canada, we are taught to fear drugs and those who use them from a very young age. In many schools across the country, the Dare Drug Awareness Resistance Education Program has armed police officers regularly entering classrooms to quote-unquote "educate children about narcotics". This is done mostly through the use of scare tactics and the threat of arrest. When children are taught that drugs, and by extension drug users, are something to be feared, something worthy of punishment, it encourages them to think of users as others, instead of as regular people in need of support. When the use of drugs is made to be seen as inherently criminal, it stops people who may be in need from reaching out fearing arrest or worse. As you will hear directly from some of the staff at the ICH a little later in this episode, the use of illegal drugs is often tied directly to mental health issues, meaning that a lot of those struggling with their mental health are likely to develop some sort of an addiction as a response to their struggles. So when drug use is already so clearly linked to mental health, the last thing that people struggling with addiction need is to be told that they're criminals, or that they're in any way less deserving of support. To quote now from KFLNA Public Health's page on opiates on their website, "As a community, we can help to reduce people's risk of overdose by reducing stigma towards people who use drugs. Stigma refers to negative attitudes towards or negative beliefs around groups of people. Stigma can include judging, stereotyping, or discrimination. Stigma can prevent people from seeking help for their drug use, reduce the quality of care they receive when they do seek help, and make people less likely to seek help again in the future." They then list a few things which you can do to help combat stigma, which I'd also like to include, those being: learning more about the reasons why people might use drugs, recognizing that substance use disorder is a medical condition that requires care just like any other health condition, talking openly with people in your life about drug use and choosing your words carefully, and of course, showing compassion and respect towards people who use drugs. The stigma against drug users in this country runs very deep. And while everything KFLNA Public Health puts forward here are great ways to combat stigma, the issue is that all of their advice is contradictory to what most of us are taught growing up. To circle back to the poll results I talked about earlier, stigma is likely a huge part of why so many people responded absolutely not. Unless there are major shifts in policy and education all the way from the highest to the lowest levels of Canadian government, there are always going to be some people who come out of the education system believing a safe injection site would be bad for their community. Because as you'll hopefully see today, the majority of our politicians would rather fund for-profit housing as opposed to public services such as the hub. It is directly in their interest to encourage people to think this way. But to the people who responded not sure, and to those of you listening who may be similarly unsure, I sincerely hope this episode can push back against that stigma a little bit and show you why Kingston needs its Integrated Care Hub more than ever. To understand why the hub is so necessary today, we first have to go back in time a little to the summer of 2020. As we have talked about many times before on this show, since the start of the pandemic around March of 2020, homelessness and unemployment have been skyrocketing across the country. In Kingston, this rise in homelessness began to manifest itself in the form of a massive encampment at Bell Park. Those who were in Kingston at the time will surely remember the rather shocking images of tents and shacks filling the parking lot and surrounding area at Bell Park from around June up until September. While some community members banded together to help support the encampment residents, they were also met with significant amounts of harassment and general hate from not only their neighbours, but also city staff and officials as well, especially city council and the Kingston Police Department. As the summer progressed, city council voted many times on whether or not to forcibly evict the residents in Bell Park, even providing false eviction notices on some occasions causing many to pack up and head elsewhere. Ultimately, the encampment was cleared by police and city workers on September 1st, 2020, when only around 10 residents remained. As I was present that day, I can speak firsthand as to what took place. In the early afternoon, when many community volunteers were busy at work, Kingston Police arrived at Bell Park and began erecting barricades at all entrances and exits. Residents who were present at the park were then forced to begin packing up their belongings and removing them from the premises. It was around this time that volunteers, many organized by Mutual Aid Katarakuway Kingston, as well as other concerned citizens began arriving as well. A small protest began outside the barricades, calling on the police to stand down and demanding the residents be allowed to stay. Our small crowd however simply didn't have the ability to stop the eviction as dump trucks and demolition equipment arrived soon after. The focus of the protesters then shifted to doing anything possible to assist the residents in transporting their belongings as anything left at the scene was to be destroyed. Now at this point, I should clarify that the city claimed their belongings would be stored with pickup to be arranged at a later date. But evidence published by Global News Kingston showed the items in questions in a waste yard, and no evidence whatsoever was ever produced by the city to suggest that all or any of these items were ever recovered by the rightful owners. This is blatant destruction of property carried out by city workers and Kingston Police on behalf of our city council. At the end of the day, all that was left of the encampment were the words "We won't leave yet", written in Sharpie on the welcome sign, a community of almost 50 people at its height, gone. Of course, the people who had called Bell Park home all summer hadn't disappeared. They had simply spread out into several smaller, better hidden encampments around the city. And the big question now was, what, if anything, was the city going to offer them in return for having destroyed their homes? The answer came in the form of a cooling centre at the Artillery Park Aquatic Centre and a partnership between HIV AIDS Regional Services, HARS, and that Street Health Centre we talked about earlier. Over the next few months, the Integrated Care Hub as we know it now began serving Kingston's most vulnerable in a truly revolutionary way. To read directly from the HARS website, "The facility places 'the lived experience of those we serve at the centre of the work' by engaging with individuals experiencing homelessness, poverty, substance use, and mental health challenges in the creation of programming and policies for the hub. Combating stigma and providing real support is built into the very nature of the ICH. The staff there do not see people they're caring for as criminals, and nor do they treat them as such. In fact, some of the staff working at the ICH are people who have experienced addiction themselves. This is a fundamentally different approach to care than pretty much anything we have ever seen here in Kingston, and it is a massive part of what makes the hub so important to our community. People feel safe accessing care there, and as a result, the hub is able to save more lives than any other kind of facility." To quote from a recent WIG Standard article written by Dr Jane Philpott titled "Kingston's Integrated Care Hub: We Need To Keep The Doors Open", "According to a November 2021 report, Kingston is the only municipality in Ontario to see a decrease in opioid-related deaths. This period coincides with the opening of the Integrated Care Hub. Since opening in August of 2020, the hub has served 1,137 unique clients through harm reduction services, and 405 unique individuals have accessed the hub's rest accommodations. The hub has responded to and reversed more than 600 overdoses onsite since, and cares for an average of 10 people with overdoses per day. This also helps save vital human and physical resources in emergency rooms, where the cost of triage such patients is much higher than at the hub. The pandemic has added to a lack of safe drug supply in our community and an increase in products laced with fentanyl and other highly toxic substances. People who have become dependent on substance use need a safe place to use drugs, where they will be free from sexual violence and theft, and where they will be supervised in the case of overdose. Further, during a period where the capacity of local health services has been reduced, and some services have closed their doors, the Integrated Care Hub is playing a pivotal role by offering clients a safe, trusted place that meets other health and social needs in one location. And to reiterate, that's 600 overdoses that have been reversed since August of 2020. While not all of those overdoses may have been fatal, and while some of them may have been the same individual, it's safe to say the very existence of the Integrated Care Hub has saved hundreds of lives, people who might not be here today without it. Yet still, our own city council has continually vilified those accessing services at the hub while looking for any and every reason to cut funding. Currently, the ICH is preparing to face an upcoming review which, if not deemed satisfactory by council, could mean the ultimate end of the facility. This is despite Mayor Patterson himself stating that closing the hub is simply not an option, as you will soon hear him say for yourselves. So, to segue now to the main segment of this month's episode, I'm excited to present a brief timeline of the Integrated Care Hub as told by Kingston City Council. The clips you're about to hear are all taken from the archival recordings of city council meetings from June of 2020 to December of 2021. Obviously, you're not going to get the whole picture from what is 30 minutes of audio taken from nearly 30 hours of recordings, but the clips that we have included, all of which were selected by staff at the ICH and organizers with the Katarakuway Union of Tenants, are clips that best represent the overall trend and discussions at these meetings. You will hear some things said by councillors that are upsetting and outright wrong and disrespectful. You'll also hear a few councillors standing up for the hub and the work they do there. But ultimately, what I hope this montage will show is that despite decent efforts on behalf of some members of the council, the votes they've cast and the policies they've implemented have time and time again been harmful to our community and its most vulnerable members, and have been made in the interests of Kingston's wealthiest landowners. So without any further delay, let's get right into the montage.
Back to clause two, Bell Park Encampment Update.
Like you mentioned, Mike, it's important that we start to head towards a long-term solution.
It would seem to me that this is not a facility that's going to be available to clients or residents on an ongoing basis. So, does it not create additional problems in terms of establishing it at this location and then having to move it down the road? Do you not see that as presenting a bit of a problem? Or would it not make more sense to identify a location where the program can continue into the future?
I guess, we're searching, we being the city, is searching for a kind of one-size-fits-all remedy.
So, you envision a scenario where we would ever be able to provide housing options that would satisfy every one of these residents?
When you said that there's more people here, I just wonder how many more people are at Bell Park now? I think when you made the delegation at our last meeting, there was, I can't remember if it was around 30 or if it was closer to 40. So how many people are at Bell Park and how many children do you have? I know at the last meeting, I think there was two children, you know, young teenagers. How many kids do you have now?
We have, we have, we have one child, we have, we have about 42, 42, 42 adults, 42 to 50 adults depending on the time, and we have three or four dogs.
And I heard you and some of your neighbours mention this, that you go through periods where three, four times a year, all of your belongings are lost. In whatever the solution is that the city offers, should we have a comfortable, storage, secure lockup system for your belongings until the situation is resolved?
If we were to find housing for everybody there, obviously the housing wouldn't be all in one location. It would be across the city, most likely. How many people, do you think everybody would take that opportunity up? Or would there still be some people who would want to live, like you say, in the bush? And, and just, and what do you mean by suitable and safe? Obviously, suitable.
Clean, clean, healthy, and, and permanent, and permanent, and no, yeah, no bedbugs and no roaches, which seem to be an epidemic in the city throughout thousands of years it is.
We have, so a couple of things. One, I think, is locally in terms of working with some of the organizations that are funded by the provincial government, for example, has been, has been really good. So we heard from the delegation earlier tonight, and those organizations have been, you know, great to work with and very supportive and wanting to find solutions. I think the, the issue, in terms of the complexity of the issue, is not just something that's experienced in our community, but is happening obviously in other communities, urban centres. And I, I do think that it, it does require to have more conversation at, at the provincial level because it is across ministries. It's not just about Ministry of Health, but it's also about Ministry of Housing. So I know the mayor and I have had a chance to touch base and chat about that and talk about, you know, how, how can we as Kingston maybe join with other communities and, and bring that messaging back to the province to try to find some solutions?
So I think we've learned quite a lot as a council recently about the problem of persistent homelessness in the city. And I think that the recommendation that we have before us this evening does a good job at using a compassionate approach that ensures, that provides the types of services that we were looking for with that, with the amendment, with the proposal from the previous council meeting on the subject. I do feel there are obviously lots of gaps. We've heard about that from, from delegations this evening. But overall, I'm really impressed by the approach, the health equity approach that has been adopted and that we have these partnerships in place that are really important for the long term, important to ensure the wellbeing of a large proportion of vulnerable populations here in the city. So I feel very positive about that and I'm really, really impressed by all the work that's gone on and, and happy that, that organizations, organizations have come together and our staff have worked so hard over the last while to bring forward this shorter-term interim recommendation or potential solution in the, in the shorter term. We do, I think, need to embrace the important idea that housing is a human right.
Because I think we definitely heightened some expectations at our previous meeting when we talked about finding more permanent housing for, for the people. And I don't believe at this time, we've been able to offer anything other than a return to the shelter system to the residents at Bell Park.
I think one of the things is a community that we don't have a lot of, and that we need more of, and in this case would be quite adequate, would be supportive housing. And the supportive housing that often will come in a setting where it will be a large number of people residing in one building because the, the services and the supports that are required need to be present on a daily basis and not just a couple of times a week of, of drop-in.
Of course, I want to see a humane, compassionate solution to this. What I'm trying to demonstrate is the difficulty of finding permanent housing that works for anyone who happens to come along and when, when they've been homeless. And it's very difficult work, and it's not something you can solve like overnight, obviously.
Okay, at this point then, we will call the vote on clause two. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried with councillor Chappelle opposed. And then finally clause number eight, Integrated Care Hub Permanent Relocation Option.
I'll put my question this way, what barriers might there be for this to be a permanent option for this service? There may be strain on the neighbourhood, the nearby neighbourhood, if there's a high number of users there, but that remains to be seen, and we have to put it somewhere. So, so I will support the recommendation. Thank you.
First of all, I'd say this is welcomed and generally good. The, it's because there needs to be a more permanent location for the Integrated Care Hub. So I think I can certainly support that. The, I appreciated councillor Stroud's remarks that this will put more stress on the neighbourhood. There's a considerable amount of social housing in the neighbourhood as it is, and to that extent, I'd just like to remind council that this location does not meet the city's general housing strategy of spreading out social housing and, and the like. If you know the neighbourhood, you know what I'm speaking about.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, but we may be the only city our size that only has a single shelter provider. And in talking to some of the, the Bell Park, whether you want to call them residents or campers, whatever, that is a problem.
There was a comment about that the needs were greater than the capacity. And I am wondering how much this time, and are there any suggestions or ideas for that? What, how, how, how short are we, how big is the shortfall right now?
You mentioned that in the shelter system, that right now we have about 550 individuals. Of those 132 are, were out of the service manager's service area. And, and so I just wonder, because these 132 people, they're still in Kingston, they are living here. They may be outside of our service manager area, but they are accessing our shelters and/or, and/or maybe even living on our streets, or living in the rough. So I just wonder if we can, are there some, is, do we have some information regarding how much homelessness actually costs our community? Like, how much does it cost? When we don't give shelter or when we're reluctant, you know, to give shelter for people who live outside of our area, and how much do overdoses cost? What is the cost to community? Okay, so my next question was about the Integrated Hub system, how pilot project. So now, you're going, we're going to be, council's going to be asked if we approve the Montreal location. And, you know, we did hear the presentation about concerns and the lack of consultation. But it is important that we do recognize that a lot had to happen fast because of the pandemic. So there were reasons why we didn't consult as much as we should have. And I am glad to see in the report that that is going to be rectified. But going back to the Montreal location, I just wanted to double check, is this still going to be a pilot? Is that going to be temporary? Because there's also an extension now with the Artillery Park location, but are we talking temporary or are we talking long-term? I did go to the Integrated Hub yesterday and I had a great conversation with, with the staff. And I have to say, it really is impressive what they're, what they're, what they're accomplishing. And we, we have known for many years that there are many people falling through the cracks. So it's really fantastic that the agencies are coming together more and working together and really offering a model that's obviously effective. Anyhow, you mentioned that there is support for landlords who offer housing. And I wonder if you could expand on that because I did hear from some landlords that they had concerns with some tenants who kept destroying their property and they felt frustrated with the city. So are we going to take a look at that as well and, and in our review? And also speak with, with landlords who are working with the city and trying to house people?
This report is an attempt to hand over another 32 million of housing money to the construction companies for the construction of unaffordable housing as part, as part of a long-term plan to tear down social rent gear-to-income housing and replace it with housing that only the well-off can afford. What this report reveals is-
We have no briefings. We do have a one petition. A petition bearing approximately 19 signatures opposing the relocation of the Integrated Care Hub to 342 Patrick Street and 661 Montreal Street was submitted to the Office of the City Clerk on September 14th, 2020 by John Yenacouris. Number six, Integrated Care Hub Update And Extended Use Of Artillery Park. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried.
I, I believe this whole experience with Bell Park was hard on city staff too, and they really worked hard to, to, to do their best. And we know that we've had concerns and we've had people living in the rough and homelessness people for so, so many years. And I think this whole experience is actually going to lead to something much better.
I, I unable to support the amendment because frankly, I think it, the amendment gives the message to the community that we individually and collectively almost support the UN protocol. And the reality is that the UN protocol, and we've all received dozens of emails from the public referencing the UN protocol as, as something that we should abide by. And no, it isn't a binding piece of legislation on municipalities, but many in our community pointed out- pointed out that it would be an embarrassment if we didn't support it. And for people, I know Counselor McLaren voted for the eviction on all seven, six votes that took place that night for amendment. And moving a motion that basically says we almost support the UN protocol on homelessness is really, really unfortunate. And I can't support that amendment for that reason.
And when we had those discussions, many of us, I think, were hopeful that the timeline was going to be sufficient. Some of us didn't believe that it would be sufficient. And the unintended consequence of putting in place that timeline was that we failed to meet the UN protocol. Because we ended up, despite the fact that staff took an extra month and worked again on an hourly basis to try to find a solution that would allow them to implement our direction while still avoiding a forced eviction, which everybody in the community wanted. They didn't know where, no one wanted that outcome.
And I I don't think anyone can credibly make the case, facts are facts. If you've read the UN Declaration, nobody can credibly make the case that we complied with the UN wording. I mean, the wording is pretty clear. Under no circumstances should encampments be dismantled deliberately. It says that in, that's what the Declaration is all about. You know, it it doesn't matter to the public who did what, when and how it happened. We all know the next summer, there's going to be homelessness still in Kingston. There's going to be more encampments either at the same place or elsewhere. None of it will be necessarily tied to what happened this year. It's just consequence of the pandemic and the housing situation in Kingston. We know it's coming. That's what this motion, the the main motion tries to address. The amendment makes no difference. The amendment is I don't know, it's it's adding more negativity to an already very negative situation. And I don't think it's necessary. And I didn't let that it was circulated by email to all of Council privately without the members of the public knowing this. That's in contravention to the rules procedure. And actually, the mayor would be in order to admonish the member of council that did that.
Municipalities are a function derived by provincial statute. As such, I find it quite frankly disturbing that we would try to tie ourselves to the United Nations, even though it's a non binding protocol. And I did meet the 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 person who did the report and wrote it when she came and did a presentation on homelessness in the city of Kingston. I found it very informative, but I caution that having the United Nations Protocol is a real misnomer and many people misunderstand what this means, as if you're imploring a set, a series of rights onto homeless people, which is really contrary to what we have in place under municipal legislation through given to us through the province. And so I don't recall signing on to this United Nations Protocol for the homeless encampments in Canada. And I think it is very dangerous to go down this path.
We have to do a better job of learning about the experience of people who are experiencing homelessness and learn what it means to be to have experienced trauma and understand why programs and services might not be meeting needs when someone is is coming from that perspective, when when what is being offered might sound good to us, but is further problematizing their situation or exacerbating their trauma.
And the Integrated Hub is a great model. I would hate for it to to be built up only for us not to be able to continue that support because and and I recognize fully that we do need the help from other levels of government. But the whole, in our entire community benefits when we look at, look after the most vulnerable in our community.
So just not surprisingly, perhaps, on the housing file, the just a matter of clarification, and I have a concern that will the city have sufficient interim and permanent housing for the known homeless population in place at the end of October?
As you know, the Integrated Care Hub is continuing over the fall, winter, spring, and at least until July, at at which point we will see what kind of funding and what we can continue to do. But those are all initiatives that are currently underway and will continue to be underway.
Governments are not companies or households. We are a little bit different and austerity has not worked. It never works. There's a whole history of that, over 200 years of that. It's not going to be a community if we're cutting back on spending as well, like they need to make their commitments in a sense. That money that we spend is taken out of people's pockets who can afford it, property owners. Some of the biggest ones here too are the ones who are spending the benefit the most from a reduced tax rate. When you take it out of theirs and you spend it, you're actually helping the local community. You're actually creating jobs. We've lost employer employees here in Kingston, in the city. That's money that can't, that isn't spent within the local community. That's why austerity doesn't work. I mean, we have to create depression for that. Economists on both sides of the left and the right spectrum have pointed out it's the wrong thing to do. It just, that's empirical data. With regards to morality about this, property owners are the are the most well off people in the community and the programs that we're giving up are the ones that are for the most vulnerable. And in that sense, that's morally repugnant to me. So no, I'm in favor of making sure that we don't that we that we balance our budget, but also that we keep on spending because that's what the community needs right now.
What measures are taking place to protect those who are suffering from mental health issues that are not using drugs from those that are using drugs so that the two populations can successfully be separated and managed accordingly? And encourage that those different populations, although sharing a space, have the appropriate services they need?
Just to speak honestly and openly, there there's very few people that we do service that don't have complex needs and concurrent disorders. So a majority of the people that are accessing our program that have a diagnosed mental health disorder are chronically using substances as well, unfortunately, to treat that mental health disorder as well. So it's very, very, very rarely that we don't have somebody that is suffering from mental health disorders as well as a substance use disorder on top of it.
You made a couple of comments about sustainability and I'm interested, it's early days. I recognize it's early. And we're not going to solve everything right away. But I guess I'm wondering, is there any thoughts about that? And you know, with the building, how adequate is it? How how much would it expand in in three to five years? And but in the short term, or how do you reach out? How do you reach out? What what we can do? Maybe I should know that, but I don't. So there you go.
You know, if there's more that we can do, and I'm sure there is, you know, we hope it'll come back to us.
Thank you. That offered some insight into what you actually do because when when we when we don't work in an environment like that, it's hard for us to imagine what you every day may look like.
So how many individuals do you think would use the space if more space was available? Behind that is I often hear that the ICH is not big enough to do the job.
Just listening to what you're saying about the complex nature of homelessness we have, and you described a variety of segments with the, you know, military veterans and other homeless people as well, some that don't have a codependency on on drugs or a mental illness and then have that co combination. And so those people who are not drug dependent but are very much outside of that scope, is there an opportunity for for them to stay at the shelter? Or do they feel at risk from the other behaviors of the people who may have drug addiction issues?
I'm just wondering, maybe I should know this, but so we, if we, and we will probably approve the extension to the the end of the year. What what's the ultimate plan? Like, why wouldn't it be a longer term? Because we're not, we're going to have to keep renewing it unless we had another location. So I just wonder about the thinking behind the the short term, while this is a a ten month or whatever extension. So is it always open to another location? Is this a trial? Well, until something else comes along or what? Because we're investing so much in in that property. I just wonder what the thinking is behind the scenes.
And I should add that South Canada has reviewed the current location and has approved it.
Will the actual cost be presented in such a way that it's it's clear and concise to how much it would cost and how much that would be to the taxpayer if we are looking to maybe support this locally?
You know, most of the behaviors, I mean, judging by what I've seen on police reports, there's not there isn't violent calls or calls to the police or anything like that that are happening so much other than a fight perhaps between two clients. But there isn't violence to any of the residents that's occurring. Think more, it's just we're getting, you know, the issues of trespass and concerns about behaviors, erratic behaviors and those kind of things.
Thank you, worship. One of the questions that comes to mind when I looked at this report was there wasn't any mention of a 24 hour warming sites in the winter. And I I know you could argue that they could go to the Integrated Care Hub, but some people may not want to be associated with with, you know, a safe injection site.
What I'm trying to do is address the numerous neighborhood issues with businesses and with residents that have arisen and are continuing to arise. And I know of at least one or two counselors that know that this is going on and have caused some something of real difficulties for the people that live in the immediate vicinity of the ICH. Notwithstanding, the ICH appears to be doing some good work. And there is and continues to be, for instance, for example, a considerable amount of garbage and waste being produced way beyond what was there before and even way beyond what was there last year or even six months ago. Okay. And it's costing the city a considerable amount of money. It's not that staff haven't been trying to do this all along and some good work has been done and some work regarding security, for for example, fencing along the back of Rita Street in Montreal because of people invading backyards and taking things and stealing and and the whole nine yards. So that has been, that had, those things have been done, but the but the situation is still is deteriorating. It's not getting better. I do think the ICH is doing something worthwhile, but I would like it proven to me.
But I do want to basically point out to Council that for 2022, we would obviously allocate the funding and continue the operations because otherwise it would be closing in January.
And I know that we really rushed to get this site and skipped a whole bunch of planning processes in place. And so we don't have an understanding of even how safe this site is. I understand there are issues of high mercury issues on this property, hydrogen sulfide gas, ninety plus other contaminants at high high levels, even mercury compounds, just because of the nature of that business was used, including DDT, which is a banned pesticide. I'm sure you're familiar with.
The Integrated Care Hub, it was a pilot project. I don't want to put any more money into it. From like my perspective, it has been very expensive, whatever. I just don't want to put any more money towards the Integrated Care Hub of everything. The emails I've had over the last year in its current location, I just don't want to do anything more towards it.
I have met with Minister. She is, had lots of great questions. She would like to come down and have a look at the hub. And she has personally implored us to keep her going and not to not to shut it down. If we were to shut it down, we need to think about what services would we put in place that would replace it? Because I think extending the ICH is just simply not an option.
Anyway, I just don't want to put any more money towards the Integrated Care Hub from the property tax power base. Thank you.
On the Integrated Care Hub. Okay, so why would a municipality pay its own budget money, its own money collected from taxpayers, taxpayers' money for supports for these individuals that do have access to other supports that are provincially funded? Now that it's 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 coming out of our budget, I know it's a temporary thing, but it it really, you know, it's throwing, it's throwing our our good money perhaps after bad because we haven't really had the results from the existence of the ICH that we would like. Let's be honest about our reality check here. We've had a COVID outbreak. We've had you know, multiple security breaches. We've had all kinds of stories there. I mean, it's a nightmare to to manage, I'm sure. The folks that work there, I'm I'm sure the most dedicated, but you know, we're not going to be able to fund it forever. So either we say no now or we say no later.
The previous speaker mentioned that there are some other services available if we were not to fund the ICH. I just wonder if we if we could respond to that, where would people go? Where would the clients go? And what could we expect if we were not to actually vote in favor of this, number one?
Thank you. And through you, thank you for that question. So I think that is definitely the one million dollar question. Currently, there is a different type, there's different types of clients that are utilizing the Integrated Care Hub services. Some clients may, you know, ultimately need to move into, sorry, transitional or supportive housing solutions that we obviously, as as we know, don't have an ample supply of in this community. We also have clients that, sorry, have, because we are currently still at a lower shelter capacity due to the COVID regulations, you know, it has been helping, you know, some clients to have, you know, a roof over their heads overnight. But again, we we all know that there is limited services in all those different areas for people to to move into.
But we can't close this because we just heard from staff that we don't have the services to give to people and more people will die on our streets.
Before I end this episode off here, I just want to thank and give a shout out to the people over at the ICH and the Cataract Way Union of Tenants for making that montage possible. I truly was just the humble editor of that project and I really, really respect the folks who listened through hours and hours of city council meetings to pick out those clips. There are a lot of people in our community right now working very, very hard, nonstop, to ensure that the hub gets to keep its doors open and that the people there aren't left with nowhere to turn. And I was very glad to have lent a hand in that small, small way to help get their message out there. I had hoped to sit down with some of the staff at the hub and though I've said this before, it is still something I very much so intend to do. However, as I'm sure you can now see, the staff at the hub have truly got their hands full. They're just trying to keep doing what they do so well. So this won't be the last time we talk about the hub. And hopefully sometime very soon, you'll get to learn more about this amazing facility directly from the people working and accessing services there. But until then, the ICH needs our support. If you would like to donate any time, money, supplies or resources to this cause, you can reach out to the Cataract Way Union of Tenants on all social media platforms or donate directly to their ongoing GoFundMe campaign. You can also reach out to your city councillor by calling or sending them emails to let them know that you support the hub. As you just heard, emails can be a powerful motivator for politicians. And on that note, thank you all so, so much for listening. My name is, once again, Sebastian Valencourt, and I'll talk to you all next time on Crisis Watch, Kingston. My name is once again Sebastian Malincourt and I'll talk to you all next time on Crisis Watch Kingston.
Thank you for listening to this podcast produced at CFRC 101.9 FM at Queen's University, situated on the traditional territory of the Yanashnabe and Hode纳shoni peoples and brought to you by the generous support of the Faculty of Engineering and Applied Science.